Let the record also reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Under General this evening, a note from the Director of Public Works that snow removal will not start until about nine or 10 this evening, and therefore your cars will not be towed out front of City Hall, and they will be starting up near the Hanaford area and then working their way back towards town. So, little note from the Public Works Director. Thank you, Director Fox. With that, moving on to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any Committee Correspondents this evening? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two updates tonight. First off, just to let everybody know that we had our first get-back-together for the Long Range Planning Committee with the comprehensive plan. The meeting went well, very energetic group, we're all ready to get to work and started on it, and we did find out the day after our meeting that the comp plan has been approved by the state. So, we are set with that. And second, with Park and Rec, just to let everybody know, right now, we have, the equipment for the Purple Park Playground has been ordered, and installation is to occur April 17th through the week of April vacation, and then also the gazebo or covering for the dog park is set to be completed by June 1st.
Thank you very much. Any further Committee Correspondents to Council? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just an FYI update. About two weeks ago, I was elected as the Board Chair for the Chamber of Commerce. That's related to my council liaison role to the Chamber. So, just wanted to give the Council a heads-up that that's a new role. Just an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further Committee Correspondents at this time? Moving on, Item 6, Public Comment. Several folks have signed up, first being William Zafferson. For all of those that have signed up, please state your name and address when you come to the podium, and please keep your comments three minutes and speak directly into the microphone.
I'm timing myself. Good evening, Mayor Doyle and Saco City Councilors. My name is William Zafferson, and I live at One Cortland Circle here in Saco. I'd like to express the importance of one of the agenda items tonight regarding the ferry road sidewalk. I and many of my neighbors on the ferry road and the adjacent streets have come before you to express our concerns for safety as the road conditions are not conducive to bicycles and pedestrians sharing the same space with the automobiles and trucks. This is not a nice-to-have amenity, but it is a need-to-have safety element. Previously, in this meeting, or in other meetings, residents have shared with you examples of multiple brushes with vehicles as they walk between Bayview and Seaside. First of all, let me demonstrate that when we walk our dog Quinn, my wife and I oftentimes wear safety items. I'm going for the visual, but a lot of times, we will be wearing a safety vest, a construction vest, and I'm not going to model this one either because it's going to mess up my hair, but we also wear, you know, a bright orange cap, and if it's dark, we're also wearing something with a light. Our dog will have a beacon that hangs from her leash and tied to her, I'm sorry, from her harness, and tied to her leash is a strobe. And given all of these items, I still have had brushes with cars that have been zipping by. So, this afternoon, I was informed by another resident, Linda Poole. She expressed her regrets that she was out of state and unable to be here, but she lives close to the marsh down by Camp Ellis, and she's seen multiple times, field trips of kids, middle age, middle school age, upper elementary school age, that have been walking on the very paths that we've already identified are just not safe, there just isn't enough room. So, we're putting a lot of kids at risk. So, as you listen to tonight's presentation, please keep these things in mind. Safety must be our overriding concern. Access to Camp Ellis is an important resource for the city of Saco, and because we have beaches, fishing, dining, sightseeing that takes place there, and this provides a better gateway to the important, into this important area. There's a renewed interest in the economic value of Camp Ellis. I also want to just ask the question rhetorically, does the current road design with its ditches as it exists promote safe travel? I'm also going to ask rhetorically, are there questions, I'm sorry, are there projects that need to be done even if the sidewalk is not done, is going to be built into the cost of the overall project? And then I also want to consider just our tourist traffic. As a destination, Saco has many resources that draws residents from the U.S. and Canada who may be unfamiliar with a road. They may be unfamiliar with the narrow nature of the walking areas and even considerations about the speed and the need to leave three feet between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And at the end, I also just want to call attention to the fact that a lot of children, a lot of young families with children in the area, which makes the ferry road a dangerous road for our youngest residents and visitors. The beaches and other amenities are a draw for families, so we want to do the best to protect them. I understand that the construction of any infrastructure project is expensive, but I hope you prioritize this sidewalk. I'm also hopeful that you direct city staff to seek out funds from local, state, and federal sources to move forward with the project. I just want to say thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you tonight, and I also want to thank you for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next to speak is Charlie Garland.
I'm Charlie Garland. I live down on Ferry Landing now. I moved down onto the ferry road in April of 1942, so I have seen a few changes over the years. My main concern is the fact of safety. Many years ago, I was a runner, then I became a jogger, and then as I got older, I became a biker, and I don't mean a motorcycle biker either. As you drive down the ferry road, when you hit the cemetery and start driving down, you get accustomed to people walking on the sidewalk or as, when it was put in, called a bike path. And then all of a sudden, when you get to the Bayview Road, there's nothing, and people are walking in the street. And a lot of people do not pick up on that difference until it's too late and they're maybe a half a mile down, and they'll say, wait a minute, we have the people walking their dogs or people walking with their kids on their tricycles, bicycles, or what have you. So, I was involved with City Administrator Jack Dexter back when the current bike path or sidewalk was put in, and I think it would be a great thing for the city to just extend that down to Camp Ellis, primarily for the safety of the people, kids, dogs, what have you, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Patrick Conlin.
Hi, good evening. Patrick Conlin, I live at 79 Granite Street in Bitterford, so I'm not a Saco resident, but I've been participating with the Saco Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee here in Saco, attending their meetings and brainstorming with them, trying to come up with some solutions for some things. But last time I was here, I spoke real quickly about an event that I'm trying to put on in Bitterford and Saco called a Tour to BS, which is a bicycle ride, family-friendly, nice, slow, casual-paced ride, and I've got some progress to report on that. I've had meetings with the Heart of Bitterford Organization in Bitterford, and I'm trying to schedule a meeting with your Main Street Saco Organization. With Heart of Bitterford, we've come to the place where we've developed a safety plan for the ride, a list of all the items we're going to do to make the ride as safe as possible, and our next step is to have a meeting with the Police Department because we want this ride to have a police escort in both cities. The ride would start in Bitterford, come into Saco, and then go back into Bitterford, and it's basically just a chance for people to get out and bike ride with a group during the day where they can feel safe. A lot of people don't ride bicycles because they don't feel safe, you know? So, that's kind of the point of the ride, just to have fun and kind of break the winter doldrums and get people out, activity. The other issue, well, the date we have tentatively right now is June 17th for that event, which is Saturday, and hopefully we'll also be able to meet with the Saco Police Department and get them involved as well. There is a gentleman who used to be a police officer who was on the Saco BPAC Committee, and he said that the forces work really well together, so I'm hoping we can make that happen. The other thing is, there's a new film out called The Street Project, and I'm working on organizing a screening of that film in Bitterford, and I'd like to let you know about that, and I'm sure through the BPAC, we'll talk about it a little bit more. I think it's a great opportunity for people to see some things and to discuss street safety for cycling and walking. And I'd also like to just real, say also, the gentleman, the two gentlemen before me, I agree with them 100%, love to see some progress on those sidewalks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is David Plaven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plaven. I live at Two Surf Street in Saco. I'm also the Vice President of SOS Saco Bay. I just wanted to get up in front of you briefly to let you know how important that $2 million that hopefully Susan Collins will request for us. If we can get that $2 million, I believe that would open the door for the Army Corps to actually start working on the project in the second half of this year, and it would be, you know, a major milestone if we can accomplish it. So, I know the mayor and city administrator are going to send a letter of support for us. We have, SOS membership has sent 100 letters of support, and we also have getting support from our state legislatures and a bunch of other people, so anybody with, you know, a title after their name can really help this project, and hopefully we'll get that money. We should know by the end of March if she's going to make the request. I think if the request is made, it's a fait accompli that it'll be, that it'll be approved. The other reason I wanted to talk to you is that on Friday, March 24th, we're going to hold the Fourth Annual Saco Bay Symposium. This is an event that started four years ago, was the brainchild of then-State Senator Justin Shanet and Mayor Doyle, and it's grown significantly. We have, I believe, 18 confirmed attendees already out of the 26 or 7 that I've invited. It includes state officials, people from Maine Geological, DEP, federal reps, a very wide swath of people that are all involved one way or another in not just Camp Ellis, but coastal environment as well. So, you're all invited to that. It's going to be at 9:30 a.m. in this chamber, and if you can't make it, we're going to stream it, and it'll be recorded, so you'll be able to watch it at some point. But I just wanted you to know that if you can make it or would like to attend, please do. That's all. Thank you very much, and your support is needed and appreciated.
Thank you. That is all for the folks that have signed up. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Greg Pol, 10-minute a drive, Cascade Falls Development. I don't really know if I should be asking this at this point in time at the meeting, but I have questions underneath number nine, Action Item E, the Senior Relief Tax Plan. So, do I wait until we get to the E? I see a council member's head shaking his head over there, so I'll step back.
So, there is a public hearing under Item E, the Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief Update. So, yes, you can speak during that public comment, or you can choose to speak now. It's up to you.
No, no, I'd rather get the paperwork in front. Thank you.
Okay. Last call for public comment. Moving on from public comment, on to Item 7 of the agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes for February 13, 2023. Is our motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counsel Berman, any discussion? The minutes from the 13th, roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the minutes. Brings us to Item A to consent items. Item A is an application for solid waste permit for waste management of Maine. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hatch, any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call vote on the consent agenda, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the consent agenda. That brings us to Item 9, Action Items. First is Item A, a public hearing on the renewal application for special entertainment permit. Bitterford Saco Country Club, page 8 in your packet, and assigned to Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bitterford Saco Country Club has applied for the renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch to open the public hearing. Any objection? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0 at 6:47 p.m. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the City Council on the renewal application for a special entertainment permit for the Bitterford Saco Country Club, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Berman?
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by the Bitterford Saco Country Club for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch to close the public hearing and order the renewal permit. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to Item B on page 10 in your packet, Another Public Hearing on Chapter 4 on Updates, assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. The Chapter 4 update simplifies some language and adds the Director of Budget and Fiscal Analysis position. City Council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Charter 4, Section 14, Department of Finance, and schedules the public hearing for February 27, 2023, which is passed. Yeah. My apologies. We need a motion to open the public hearing. What's that?
If you, if you change the date, that's a typo. That's supposed to be March 27th for our March 27th meeting.
Gotcha.
So, if you can just change the date to March 27th, we should be okay.
Dooley changed to March 27, 2023. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch to set the, excuse me, to open the public hearing and then to update the February date to the March date. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? No discussion, roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Abstain.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes, to open the public hearing.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention to open the public hearing at 6:51 p.m. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the City Council on Chapter 4 Updates, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Hatch?
I'm sorry, I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the City Council approve the first reading of the amendments to Chapter 4, Section 14, Department of Finance.
Counselor Hatch, I think you're at the public hearing piece, so you would be setting the final reading for March 27th. So, this would be closing the public hearing and sign off, excuse me, send it, excuse me, setting final reading for March 27th at our council meeting.
My apologies, but the information I have in front of me is not consistent.
That, there is some typos there.
Okay, so I'm going to agree to the motion that you just put on the floor, if that could be easier. Does that work?
Are you rereading the motion?
I can. To approve the amendments to the Chapter 4, Section 14, Department of Finance, and schedule for a final reading on March 27, 2023.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing and approve the amendments to Chapter 4, Section 14, Department of Finance, and set final reading for the 27th of March. Again, that's to close the public hearing and set final reading for changes or amendments to Chapter 4, Section 4, Department of Finance on March 27th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to Item C on page 13 in your packet. It's Public Hearing on Chapter 15, Updates Assigned to Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change adds matching funds for grants to the list of qualified use of surplus and also updates reference codes for certain designated funds and other chapters. This also adds a reference to a recommended new fund titled Proceeds from Sale of City Property, which is addressed in the Chapter 81 revisions as updated per council feedback. Same staff recommends approval, and I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 6:54 p.m. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the City Council on public hearing for Chapter 15 Updates, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the final reading for March 20, 2023.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman to close public hearing and set final reading for March 20, 2023. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. It's a bit, it's related but unrelated. Several years ago, when we last addressed this chapter, council, I had made some amendments, and council approved those amendments, and I don't believe they got codified, so I'm just making note of that now, and I will submit what I'm speaking about to the administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to close the public hearing and set final reading for March 20, 2023. That brings us to Item D on page 15 in your packet, a public hearing for Chapter 81 Updates, and that is assigned to Counsel Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change directs oversight of sale of city property to economic development. This should streamline the process. Based on council feedback, surplus proceeds from sale of city property are now directed to a new special revenue fund to be expended for future development projects or as directed by council. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, open the public hearing at 6:57 p.m. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the City Council on the public hearing under Chapter 81 Updates, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Berman?
I move to close the public hearing and to schedule a final reading for March 20, 2023.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Bur, excuse me, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to close public hearing and set final reading for March 20. That brings us to Item E on page 18 in your packet. It is a public hearing, Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief Updates, assigned to Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, once again. These changes remove references These changes remove references to year one of the program to simplify the ordinance and removes the reference to tax commitment overlay, as this program is funded by appropriation instead. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councillor Berman to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call to open the public hearing, Councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Berman.
Yes.
Councillor Hatch.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing at 6:59 PM. Those members of the public wishing to speak to the City Council on this item, please come forward and be heard.
Greg Polk, 10 minute of drive. I know this is a new state of Maine legislative activity, and this was started in 2022. I have my letter of approval here for 2022 through the Assessment Office, and this will be the first year. On this letter, I have some questions. This letter says that my taxes would be frozen for the amount or rate of 2022. Is that going to change going forward afterwards? That's one of my questions. I guess I have another question, too, that's pretty basic. Will this be talked about again in a public response down the road in, in the City Council's meeting? This, this topic of senior tax?
So Greg, the City Council has passed this ordinance in the past, and these are just updates to those ordinance, so this is the public hearing portion where the City Council does talk about these things. There'll also be a final reading on March 20th, where they'll also talk about these updates. And what I would encourage you to do with your questions directly related to the documents that you received, speak to the Assessing Department directly, because the councillors are going to have limited knowledge of your documents that you've received from the Assessing Department.
Okay, okay, because on, on some of the language that's in the new chapter here, that's where I had my questions. So the Assessment Department will be able to answer these when I go in and talk with them.
They should be able to answer the questions if they drafted the letter and sent it to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Any further discussion on the Chapter 175 Senior Tax Relief Updates? With nobody seeking recognition, Councillor Berman.
I move to close the public hearing and to schedule a final reading for March 20th, 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councillor Berman. Councillor Johnston, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Berman.
Yes.
Councillor Hatch.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item F on page 22 in your packet, a first reading, Chapter 83, Cost Recovery Ordinance, Revisions and Draft Fee Schedule Updates, assigned to Councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chapter 83, Cost Recovery outlines the city's authority to charge applicants city staff review time and consultant fees necessary to conduct development reviews and post-approval compliance monitoring. These proposed revisions better align with Saco's current ordinance provisions citing chapters instead of application types. Certain staff titles and definitions have been corrected, and several updates have been made to the draft ordinance and draft fee schedule to better reflect the planning departments and finance departments' procedures. The Economic Development Department's fee schedule has also been separated into its own appendix. These draft revisions are part of a larger standard operating procedures initiative, and the revisions are a result of collaborative work between the planning department and the finance department. Planning and finance departments work collaboratively on these proposed revisions, and a such staff from both departments recommends approving the first reading and scheduling the public hearing. I move to approve the first reading of the Chapter 83 Cost Recovery Ordinance Revisions with accompanying fee schedules updates, and to schedule the public hearing for March 20th, 2023.
Motion's been made by Councillor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor McPhail. Any discussion on the first reading for Chapter 83 Cost Recovery Ordinance Revisions and Draft Fee Schedule Updates? Councillor Berman.
Now, just, just to note that I appreciate the efforts in the standard operating procedure. I think the changes add a lot of clarity, and the appendix with the fees is clear and keeps things very simple, so I appreciate the work and efforts.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, Councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Berman.
Yes.
Councillor Hatch.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero and approve the first reading. That brings us to pa, excuse me, item G, page 29 in your packet, a first reading, Contract Zone Request for 265 North Street, assigned to Councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ted Arcand of Arcand Properties requests a contract zone agreement with the City of Saco to establish a commercial catering kitchen and to host indoor and outdoor events, limited to 75 people on weekends. Purpose of this project is to relocate Blue Elephant Catering from its current Preparal Square location to 265 North Street, and to expand its existing operations. Mr. Arcand plans only to make interior alterations to the existing building at this time. At its January 3rd, 2023 meeting, the planning board found the contract zone application complete and scheduled a public hearing. At its January 17th meeting, the planning board heard from Mr. Arcand about the proposal and opened the public hearing. After receiving public comment, the board closed the public hearing and voted five zero to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council. I move to approve the first reading for the contract zone agreement for 265 North Street, which is on map 54, Lot 8, and to schedule the public hearing for March 20th, 2023.
Motion's been made by Councillor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Johnston. Any discussion? Councillor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things, and I'm sorry I didn't notice these when, when it was still new business, but, but first I'd like to thank the city planner for addressing some of the concerns that a constituent had about some of the details and dates, so I'm grateful that those changes are reflected here in this contract. But second, I have some questions about, I guess, what's item three, J, A, and C? That's found on page 33 of our packet. It talks about onsite events being limited to weekend evenings with no onsite events allowed during the week, but in the item commentary during New Business, it talks about hosting events such as rotary meetings, which are held Wednesdays at noon. And I'm just wondering, has the intent of, of this contract changed? Would, would private events such as rotary meetings be allowed under this contract? Or how the, the item commentary and intent of this contract and, and this limitation are consistent? I'm, I'm a little confused there. And then I also have some questions about JC. These items, events are limited to the evenings, and it defines the end of an evening, but not the beginning of an evening. So I'm curious about when evenings start for this contract also.
At this time, we'll see if the city planner, Emily Cole Prescott, is available to come up. City Planner Prescott, thank you for joining us. Were you able to hear Councillor Berman's questions?
I believe so. I'll answer them in the opposite order.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't think we've defined an, an evening start time. Certainly, that's within council's right to do. I, as far as three, J, A, and C, the applicant is here and can answer any questions on intent. He's, he's sitting in the back there, if you wanted to hear from him. As far as how this is written, any event would be limited to Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Onsite events would include both indoor and outdoor events.
So, so presumably a, a club meeting would be an event as defined by this contract?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
And that's, the council can certainly change that.
I do note that the, the letter from our packet originally requesting the, the contract zone did mention, I happen to be a member of the Rotary Club, so I noted Rotary meetings noon on Wednesdays, and I just, yeah, because I'd be curious to hear from the applicant about the intent, if that's possible.
Councillor Berman, would you like to bring up the applicant?
If possible.
Counsel, any objection to bringing up Mr. Arcand?
Evening, counsel, how are you today?
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you. I believe that with the, like the Rotary, the, the restrictions on the weekends and evenings were for outdoor events. Indoor events can still be held during the week, because, because they're, could be limited to 20 to 25 people inside the, inside the building. So events like the Rotary Club, we would accommodate, you know, weekday events.
Thank you. I, I believe the current language in the ordinance says onsite events will be limited to weekend evenings, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. No onsite events will be allowed during the week, Monday through Thursday. Onsite events include both indoor and outdoor events in red. So, so I believe the language might be a little inconsistent with what you're describing. I want to make sure that we, that we meet your needs as part of this contract.
I agree, and so in section C of that, it says outdoor events are limited to maximum 75, which must end by 10 PM. That should be weekend events, and then the, then the onsite events for any event can be go, can go inside, like a Rotary Club type of event. I'm not sure of the best way to define.
So maybe if JA said outdoor events will be limited to weekend evenings, no outdoor events will be allowed during the week?
Yes. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Did that clarify that for you?
For me, it does, yeah.
Great, thank you. Should I stay here in case there's any other questions?
Please, please. Any further questions? Discussion? This is a first reading, so this will come back. Planner Prescott, will you be able to make the, the changes requested so that Councillor Berman could make an amendment down the road at the second or third meeting?
And probably the cleanest way is to prepare a suggested amendment that then can be read in, that council can approve.
Councillor Hatch.
I would like to speak with the city planner, Prescott. I, I'm good with the conversation here in support of.
Mr. Arcand, thank you very much.
I just wanted to, and it's a high-level comment, so not necessarily specific to this contract, and I'm, I want to go on record as saying that I'm very supportive of, of this contract and the business that's going to benefit from it. Paragraph H, it's, I think it's in that same, same grouping, talks about a subject to enforcement action, and I think this has been an issue that I've brought up in the past. In fact, we had a fairly lengthy conversation back in, in May of 2022 at the May 16th council meeting about having an ordinance that has some clarity in enforcement. What, what is the accountability? We're talking about a contract, so, you know, and I, I don't think that was ever really resolved. I, I sent a fairly lengthy packet into the council, and we talked about it, and then at the end of the discussion, it's, I went to, went back and looked at the, the video. It looked like it got catapulted into political oblivion, and it's never come back, so I'm not sure if you're even privy to that document, but it was, I can forward it to you. So you have it. It's part of the record. But my only point is, is enforcement. We have a couple of contracts where we've got stipulations for timing, and I, you know, I, I'm going to say 99% of the time, we're going to have compliance, but every once in a while, something happens, and I just think that we need to have some clarity, and maybe this is more of an ordinance issue than it is for this specific contract as to what those enforcement actions could be. So that's just a high-level point for you, Emily.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Councillor Berman addressed two of the questions I had, but I did just want to talk about the zoning overall here and why, you know, we are at a contract zone, particularly just for the public, since, you know, these questions come up when we have contract zones. So going back to that ZORs process, the zoning ordinance revision, when we merged several zones, what ultimately became the MDR, the medium-density residential, initially place of public assembly was a lot, was an allowed to use. Food establishments or eat and drink, I guess we're calling them now, were not, they never have been. So during that process, it had gone on being allowed to use towards the end, when we were wrapping it up, it kind of had come up on my list of things that, or uses that didn't necessarily seem appropriate for the entirety of, of the MDR zone. I believe, you know, I'm on the record at the time as stating that I think contract zones probably were a more applicable use, given what a place of public assembly is. So that's kind of the background with that, and ultimately, the ZORs group eliminated that use, so we have a contract zone, which, again, as the ward rep for that zone, I'm supportive of, that property, for as long as I can remember, has been a commercial use of, of some capacity. So, I mean, I think this is something that, similar to whether it's the salon down the street, or the teahouse that used to be on North Street, will really fit well in the neighborhood, and given how unique this property is, if you're familiar with it, it's fenced off with a pretty large rock wall, so it's screened well, there's very limited neighbors. I, I think that really this kind of fits perfect there. So, and, yeah, I guess that's largely it. The only other thing, this is a personal thing for myself, it's, it's certainly not required by our ordinance, but something that I always try to seek, which is public benefit, and, you know, that for me has to go beyond just increased taxes or creating a new event space. So I have done some thinking about what possibly council could consider, and with Franklin Street due to be signalized in the future, I was just curious if, if staff could potentially work with the applicant to figure out a reasonable fee for, to go towards that. We, that we have done that in similar situations throughout Saco. That's it.
Thank you. Councillor Archer.
Yes, so the first part's for the city planner, and the second part's for the applicant. Have the abudders been notified?
They have been notified of the public hearing for planning board, and they will be notified of the City Council hearing coming up on the 20th.
Okay, so next part will most likely be for the applicant, is, I'm coming from a collaboration, so I'm not against it per se, but this is the first time we've talked about it, so I do have some concerns. You are abutting neighbors, right?
Abutting?
Abutting neighbors?
Yes.
I, I see a few here, I'm looking at it. I know exactly where you're located, to be honest. My concern, again, this is something from a collaborative approach, is noise. If you're staying up open till 10 a, 10 PM, and as written, that includes Sunday night, that is the weekend, so Sunday night would be 10 PM. I'm just concerned, again, this isn't even my ward, ward, it's just something that we've done something similar in the council in the past in Ward Two. It was the, when the mayor was a councillor, we denied, because of the noise was, we went out to the location, and I went out to the location, and the noise was just too loud. It was in Ward Two, previous to your, you taking the seat. So if I remember correctly, and I don't have that old contract agreement, again, it never passed, is there was noise limit, and it was done by a decibel level, and I'm not a audiologist, or anything like, I'm not an expert on that. But that's something I want us to look at, is because you are kind of changing, again, I'm coming from that positive, I'm collaboration, you're creating an outside music event, it could have music and things like that, next to houses where it would be 9:30 at night. Again, I don't come to houses where it would be nine-thirty at night. Again, I, I don't come from any sense of, uh, uh, again, I come from that collaborative approach, so how can we work with that? I'm not even saying stop the nine o'clock, but how can we, what do we have? What tools are out there? How can we help so that you can be a good neighbor, which you are, um, while changing this area? Because it is across the streets of your baseball field, so that does make noise. I mean, they're out to nine-thirty at night sometimes. Uh, Bill, you were on softball team years ago, so they went on late. I get that, but they weren't as noisy as a, um, as a music event or, or whatever host you're, whatever part of your hosting. So, that's just my concern, is, is how do we take the nuisance portion, um, uh, of, of sound, not necessarily your business by any means, but just that. How do we just make it a nicer fit into this community? Because, again, you are, there's nothing remotely the same in that area.
Sure. And we're, we're open to work with the council-
Yeah.
-on, on the best appropriate way to do that. I will say, both abutting neighbors, Phil and, and Al, are in full support of it. And Al, Al was actually the one at the last planning board meeting, or was it the last city council meeting, that suggested that we even consider outdoor use, and said that it had been used in the past. So, um, but that's not to say that there will be, that they're going to be there forever. And that, you know, I know you're trying to set the ordinances that are going to be in place for whatever time.
Yes, yeah.
So, we're willing to work with you guys on how to, how to do that best.
Because we are talking about area where there's families and things like that.
Sure.
And I know you'd be respectful.
And if the city, if the city sets some kind of limit that is standard for this type of thing, we'll, we'll obviously abide by that.
Counselor Archer, are you, uh, interested in providing an amendment that would limit J C, uh, and put something at the end that, except on Sundays, uh, outside events can only go till eight or nine o'clock? And if so, Mr. Ted, are you amenable to that, if that was an amendment that came forward?
Sure, yeah.
So, Counselor Archer, if you want to do an amendment, uh, please pass that on to city planner Prescott or city administrator Canrath.
At this time, maybe if I can have a conversation with you later. Um, I, I don't want to create one on, on the fly.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Counselor Johnston and Counselor Berman. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, I, I certainly considered noise myself, but I think that, having my own experience using the, uh, Good Neighbor Performance Standards, I think it's actually rather adequate, uh, the decibel standards that exist in our overall ordinance as is. So, it's just my feeling on it. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Uh, I concur with Counselor Johnston, and also just want to note that what doesn't appear in this packet, if you look under New Business, both the budding neighbors sent in letters of support. So, I just want to remind the council and public of that.
Ted, did you want to say something?
I was just curious. So, there is a standard that's set now with the Good Neighbors policy, or whatever you're-
Yeah, there's, there's a current standard on the ordinance. It's a-
Great. So, that might address what we were talking about, if we just address, if we just added that to this-
Yeah, I think it's-
Okay.
We can tie it in directly, but I have utilized that ordinance myself for some of my own neighbors, and it's adequate. Um, it's, you call P D., and they address it pretty quick.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to approve the first reading of contract zone request for two sixty-five North Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, counsel.
Up next is item H on page thirty-six in your packet, and that is a first reading, budget amendment number three, uh, city hall damage, and assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle, and I'll try to do better this time. So. City Hall experienced significant flood damage as a result of the sub-zero temperatures in February. A claim has been filed with the city's insurance carrier, and the refund to cover costs is anticipated to be a material amount. As such, this budget amendment creates a revenue amount, an offsetting transfer to the capital fund, to ensure we have an account with funding to cover all necessary renovation costs. The actual claim amount may be higher or lower, and subsequent adjustments will be made as needed to the related accounts. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of budget amendment number three, uh, fiscal year two, uh, twenty-twenty-three, and moves to schedule a second and final reading for March twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the budget amendment to, for the city hall damage related to the ICE? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to item I on page thirty-eight in your packet, a first reading, budget amendment number four, general assistance funds assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. On May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, L D nine-ten, an act to amend the general assistance laws governing reimbursement became public law, twenty-twenty-two, chapter seven-three-four. It allocates ten million dollars from Maine's liquor fund to the Department of Health and Human Services' general assistance account. The purpose of the one-time supplemental payment is to help offset unanticipated fiscal and operational costs to the general assistance program during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. These funds may be used by municipalities to offset potential reductions to federal funding in this fiscal year generally, and related to the potential end of the U.S.-declared public health emergency, as well as other unanticipated costs incurred during the pandemic. The city of Saco received thirty-four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents from this distribution. In order to ensure the funds remain available in future years and to offset potential property tax increases in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, Finance and the city clerk are recommending council transfer these funds to a dedicated special revenue account to use to supplement general fund appropriations for general assistance in future years. Where funding is offset seventy percent by the state, the drawdown of this fund should be relatively slow and prevent tax increases for several years. Be it ordered that the city council approves the first reading of budget amendment number four, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, and moves to schedule a second and final reading for March twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on any general assistance funds? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to take a minute to make sure the public is, is putting some pieces together. A, a few weeks ago, we increased the limits to general assistance funding to help some of our, our neediest, uh, Saco residents. Uh, today, we had a public hearing for senior tax relief. Here, we're taking state money and increasing the budget for general assistance. And later today, you'll hear from the city administrator about a new, uh, affordable housing task force. Uh, this council has been particularly active in providing support for those Saco citizens in need during these, uh, trying times of high inflation and the end of the pandemic. And I, I just wanted to get on record, uh, all the things we're doing and, and help the public paint a comprehensive picture of, of some of the accomplishments that we've had, including this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to item J on page forty in your packet, and that is to adopt the two thousand twenty-three council goals, uh, that were, that you guys had the privilege to go through at the last city council workshop. Uh, and so, these are to approve the goals, and that's been assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During their workshop on February twenty-seventh, council participated in a goal-setting exercise. The exercise started with council's twenty-twenty-two adopted goals, which were put through a prioritization grid to determine if priorities had shifted. The outcome of the prioritization for focus areas and goals are, one, financial stability, two, schools and infrastructure, three, economic opportunity, four, growth and innovation, five, livable community, six, governance, seven, environmental sustainability, eight, transparency and engagement, nine, organizational excellence. Be it ordered that the city council approve the twenty-twenty-three goals.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch, to approve the goals, uh, for two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to item ten of tonight's agenda, and that is New Business. Up first, we will hear item A, which is a PAX update, a Bitterford-Saco Transit Oriented Development Concept Plan. And we will hear from economic development specialist Jessa Burner. All right.
Uh, thank you. Uh, tonight, we have Rick Harbison here from PAX, our regional planning agency, to share some of their recent work, um, and mostly, um, to report on a project that, um, they have been working on called the, uh, Bitterford-Saco T O D Concept Plan, Transit Oriented Development Concept Plan. Um, this advisory plan was requested by the cities of Saco and Bitterford back in twenty-eighteen, um, but work on it didn't begin until twenty-twenty, and it was completed, um, towards the end of twenty-twenty-two. Um, and it can serve as a sort of a high-level resource, um, focused on Saco Island and the Mill District in Bitterford, um, for future planning and development efforts. Um, and with that, I'll hand it over to Rick and hear to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Uh, yep, my name is Rick Harbison. I'm a planner at G P C O G in PAX. And get started here. First, I just wanted to touch briefly on who we are and what we do. Sorry, do I press this?
Counsel, there is a link to the presentation in your packet, I believe.
Maybe do the spacebar. Okay. So, what is PAX? Uh, we stand for, it's the Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System. It's kind of a mouthful. Um, we are located in Portland. I like to say we're across the street from the Baked Beans Place. The street being two ninety-five, um, no longer the Baked Beans Place, it's now the Rue Institute. Um, a few years ago, PAX merged with G P C O G. Um, so, oh, it looks like we got another, I'm just going to press okay. Um, an easy way to think about it, I think, is that PAX is kind of like the transportation department within G P C O G. And G P C O G is our, the regional planning organization. It's similar to Southern Maine Planning and Development, um, is it Corporation or Commission, Commission, um, down here. The two organizations do have different service areas.
When technology works, it's great, and when it doesn't.
Okay. So, G P C O G is on the left here. Um, it's the communities in blue. It's mainly, um, Cumberland County, uh, communities, plus or minus one or two. And then PAX are these eighteen municipalities on the right. Uh, it's technically, it's the urbanized area for greater Portland. So, there's a lot of overlap with G P C O G. Um, the main difference being that, uh, the four York County, uh, communities, um, of Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Bitterford, and Arundel. Uh, in terms of what we do, I'm, um, yeah. Oh, maybe hit the top part of the, um, two major things that we do is allocate funding for projects and plan for the future. Um, some of the projects that we've funded, um, in Saco recently, um, we're funding the, uh, redesign, uh, I'm sorry, the design work for the Saco Island multimodal bridge, uh, and eventually the construction. We do have a policy where if we fund a project for design, we're committing ourselves to fund it through completion unless, uh, another source of funding, um, comes up. Um, oh, okay. Uh, another project is Maple Street and, um, Spring Hill Road in, uh, funding for road reconstruction. This is just some highlights. We've funded other projects in the area as well. Um, one thing, uh, for sure, there's never enough funding, uh, in our last round of PAX funding. Uh, we had three-point-three million available in, um, funding, and we had twenty-eight million in requests. So, we really do have to be selective in projects that we fund, and, um, you know, our, our goal is to fund projects in the best locations and to fund the best projects we can. Uh, we also fund the transit agencies. So, in this area, that's the Down Easter, um, Y C C A, A C, uh, Transit, and then B Sub Transit. Uh, and then in terms of our planning work, I'll just go briefly through here. Um, Connect twenty-forty-five is our long-range transportation plan. We've, um, finished that up in December of last year, so it's relatively new. Um, I like to think about it as our, it's kind of like our version of a comprehensive plan, except the focus is primarily transportation. So, it's a long-term visioning document. We're federally required to update it, uh, every five years. Um, we often talk about it as our umbrella document because everything else we do, um, falls underneath it. It guides all of our investments and decisions. Uh, some of the other planning work we've done recently, we did a long-range transit plan called Transit Tomorrow. That's in your top left for looking at the future of transit in the region. Uh, we did an active transportation plan. It's, um, looking at, uh, ways to improve walking, biking, and access to transit in the region. And then more and more, we've been doing, um, what I'm calling here, uh, placemaking plans. So, um, trans, specifically transit-oriented development, so looking at smaller areas like neighborhoods and downtowns, um, and looking at ways, um, that we can improve the, the transportation network, um, and overall kind of quality of place in these areas. So, we did one for the Main Mall in twenty-twenty, kind of looking at how we could potentially re-envision the Main Mall as a, a more sustainable community and adding housing in that area. Um, and then the, what I'm primarily here to talk about today is the, the Bitterford-Saco T O D plan. Uh, just a sneak peek at Connect twenty-forty-five. I was going to spend a little bit more time on this, but, um, I think it's probably better to, to focus on the T O D plan, but this is, uh, distilling months of public engagement down to the six major goals of the plan. But this is, uh, essentially the scaffolding of the plan. Um, it's what all of our, uh, it's kind of forms the basis of, uh, all of our future planning and, and decision-making. Okay, so on to the T O D plan. First of all, what is transit-oriented development? It's kind of a jargony, um, planner term. Uh, I'm going to use a visual example here. Um, so essentially, it comes down to three key elements. So, uh, the first is a high concentration of people and jobs. The second is, uh, places where it's easy to walk and bike, excuse me. Um, and the third is places where there, this is all, all this is close to and centered around, um, really high-quality public transit. So, you can see all that in this image. It's a, essentially, it's a vibrant urban area where destinations are close, where it's easy to, um, get around without relying entirely on driving. So, just to put it into context, why are we interested in transit-oriented development? Um, firstly, you know, our region is growing. So, this is a map that is probably difficult to see from where you're at, but it's showing, um, population growth, um, the net change in population growth between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. between 2010 and 2020. And all you need to know is that, you know, the areas along the coast, all our coastal communities are growing quite quickly. And this is not showing any growth that's happened since the pandemic. This is up until 2020. And Biddeford and Saco are certainly right up there at the top of the list in terms of growth in the last decade. And then where that growth occurs matters. So this is a map that's showing approximate land cover. So the red areas are developed. The green and the tan areas are typically like forest, open space, agriculture. And, you know, at the risk of oversimplifying it, our interest is really to encourage, to the extent that we can, more growth and development in those red areas in an infill way. And so continuing to develop our urban areas while preserving our open space and agricultural areas, the qualities that make our area such a great place. And so for that reason, we really see Saco and Biddeford as a bright spot in our region where the growth that's occurring here is naturally occurring in the red areas, in the downtowns, in the, you know, the former Mill buildings. And it's really emerging as a place where you could potentially live without relying completely on your car to get around, where you can, you know, destinations are close and you can walk and bike and take transit. So we find that to be really exciting and as a, a good opportunity for investing in in transportation projects. And then this is just showing from maps to reality what that green to red looks like. So some just basics, nuts and bolts about the plan. This is probably pretty hard to read from where you're at, but primary intent is to provide an in-depth assessment of the area with that TOD lens, that TOD approach, to highlight best practices and make recommendations, to show some inspirational visuals of what's possible, and I'll get to that in a minute. And then to identify projects and strengthen funding opportunities. So this wasn't necessarily on our radar at the time when we started the project, but since starting the project, there's been an influx of federal funding for all sorts of infrastructure projects. There's the bipartisan infrastructure law. There's the Inflation Reduction Act. And so the, there's a lot of funding out there, often referred to as the infrastructure decade, but it is competitive. And so projects that are identified in plans, like this one, like your comprehensive plan, the more that projects are identified, the more that can bolster your case as you apply for federal funds. So that's, has been a positive development since, since we started this plan. The timeline, as Jessa mentioned, is 2020 to 22, 2022. This plan's admittedly a little bit long on the tooth. Part of that is that we started right at the onset of the pandemic, so our priorities shifted a little bit. The budget for the project is $40,000. A portion of that went to a landscape architect/consultant. That was all funded by PAX. There was no local map, aside from Jessa's staff, in-kind staff support. And in terms of public engagement, we had two public online surveys that gathered around 1,000 responses between the two of them, and a number of stakeholder meetings. We had a project advisory committee. Jessa was our key Saco representative. And then lastly, just that, to note, as Jessa mentioned, that this plan is advisory. You don't need to adopt it. You don't need to do everything in it. It's meant to be as a resource, a compilation of strategies to consider, both for you and for us, and the transit agencies and all the other stakeholders that work in this area. So this is the, the study area for the project. It's, this is an aerial image that we created with a drone, partly because the area is changing so quickly, and the existing aerial base map was out of date. And now that we've taken this, this one is also out of date. It's not showing some developments that have happened in the last year or two, the parking garage in Biddeford, for example. Oops. But the, the study area is mainly the Mill District in Biddeford, Saco Island, and the general sphere of influence around the Saco Transportation Center. Okay, so in terms of key findings, you know, we talked about sort of those three, three things that make up transit-oriented development, high concentration of people and jobs. Really, the people and jobs are here. This is a map that we used in the plan, showing population and job density. You can see it's, you know, the downtown area is quite dense and more, more and more development happening every year. And then this is, oops. And then, yeah, new development is happening every year. This is another map that we included in the plan. So the yellow is developments that are pending, and then there's other projects are labeled in there. And this is also likely out of date. But the overall conclusion here is that, you know, we believe that there's enough people and jobs in the area to really support the TOD approach. In terms of ease of which it is to walk and bike, hopefully, this is not, doesn't come as a surprise, but there are opportunities to improve walking and biking in the area. One of the things we were able to do is use anonymous mobile phone data to look at walking and biking activity in the area. And one of the things that we found was, I think I jumped ahead here, the places where people walk the most were the major corridors, so Main Street and Elm Street. And likewise, where people bike the most was also along those major corridors. And those major corridors also tend to be the least friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists. There's just not a lot of space devoted to walking and biking. There's missing sidewalks in key places. There's large entrances to parking lots that where you kind of feel like you're in no man's land. And overall, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for improvement. And then within the Mill District, this is more on the Biddeford side, but there are places where you can, navigating can be tricky, where you run into dead ends. And ideally, there'd be more designated paths and wayfinding for pedestrians to figure out where they're going. Not to be negative, you guys, there's many, many positive aspects of this area. The Riverwalk Trail is an amazing path, an amazing accomplishment, especially the bridge. And there are lots of really attractive streetscapes like this one, York Main Street and Biddeford's Main Street, really charming, interesting places to walk and to be. In terms of transit, high-quality public transit, hopefully, this also doesn't come as a surprise, but there are opportunities to improve transit in the area. The number one comment we get on all our surveys whenever we ask the question is that we need to improve the frequency and span of service of transit. So span of service is hours of operation. You know, simply put, transit needs to be convenient. It needs to work for people's schedules. You know, if it's every hour, every two hours, it's, and it doesn't, it can get you to work, but it can't get you home. You're not, not as likely to take it. It also happens to be the hardest nut to crack because it takes a lot of investment to run a transit system frequently. Perhaps the lower-hanging fruit is improving stops in the area. There's a lot of stops that look like this. They're, this one's in Biddeford, but there are some in Saco, I'm sure, where it's, they're kind of easy to miss. There's no shelter, no place to sit. It's not, not a comfortable place to be. You wouldn't want to be there with kids or in bad weather. It's a quote from the, the executive director of the bus service. We need stops, bus stops that look like bus stops. And not to put Portland on a pedestal, because they have plenty of bus stops that look just like the one I showed previously, but they do have this project called the Creative Shelter, Creative Bus Shelter Project, where they use local artists to decorate shelters. And it's really neat. Each shelter has their own identity. It's showcasing local art. It's really enhancing the visibility of transit and kind of the prominence of it in the community. And that seems, it's just been really cool, and I think that could be replicated here as well. Another idea we had, this is jumping ahead a little bit to some of the illustrations, but on the Biddeford side, where the, on the Pearl Street area, where there's the new parking garage and the new development, is to have a transit mobility hub over there. So it'd be like an enhanced bus shelter with kiosk potentially, a bike, bike storage station. Kind of think about it as like a mini outpost to the Saco Transportation Center. And that could be one, and then you could have maybe a couple others in the area. Lastly, improving customer service technology. It's an ongoing endeavor. So BSUB Transit now uses the Dirigo app for, that allows you to pay for your ticket on your phone, which is great. It's a great convenience. Then the next step is really getting those routes up on, there's some other pretty popular transit apps that kind of operate like Uber, where you can see what the route is and where the bus is along the route, you know, what the estimated time is for the bus to arrive at your stop. And so you don't have to wait in the rain necessarily. You can stay where you are and then, you know, just go at the last minute to get your bus. So they're working on it, and that's one of, one of the projects that we're, we're keen to get going on and helping out with. Okay, so I showed that image of the, the earlier example of what TOD is, and that was a, that was a rendering. And so as part of this project, we also did our own illustrations and renderings and just kind of trying to reimagine what the area could look like with this TOD approach. So I guess the, the key word there is could look like, and that these are conceptual. But thought we'd take a crack at it. And so this is looking at, this is Main Street. You can see the Saco Transportation Center to the right. So this is existing. And then this is what we came up with as a advisory committee. So kind of this really neat park area on the left with an overlook of the dam. More importantly, there's, you know, really high-quality sidewalks on either side, kind of a pavilion waiting area on the right, and a signalized intersection at Goot Street that we thought could be, have transit signal priority so the buses could just go through. We also explored the idea of a roundabout there, if there was space. And then, it's hard to see on the far right, but we looked at, so a little bit more infill development on Goot Street in the form of liner buildings. And for each focus area, we did a top-down version, where it's, I call it a plan-view rendering, where it kind of showcases or, you know, identifies all the different ideas that we had for that spot. So you're seeing the bridge, that proposed bridge in the top left, the liner buildings in the parking lot. And I think that's about did a redesigned drive, parking lot. Focus area two is just further down the street, looking up, I believe it's York Hill. And so that's the image. And then the ideas we had here is just a really huge crosswalk for the Riverwalk Trail, another kind of nice scenic overlook of the river, sidewalk symbolizes the street extending the Riverwalk Trail further beyond on the island. It's hard to see in this image, but one of the, the key ideas for this section of road was to do a road diet, also hard to see here, but taking it from four lanes, the way it's configured now, down to three with bike lanes on either side. And, you know, there is space for it, and the traffic volumes are such that I think it could be possible. It definitely needs to be evaluated a little bit more in depth with, you know, traffic engineers. But that would free up some space and, and make it a much more accessible road segment for walking and biking. And then lastly, this is a focus area in Biddeford. This is looking at where the parking garage is, what the new development could look like, what a little bit more pedestrian-friendly elements could be added in there as well. And then the plan-view rendering showing the Riverwalk Trail, kind of extending all the way up to Route One, having a little small gateway park up there, and lots of, Pearl Point Park is the new park that's being designed, where the proposed bridge is gonna have terminate on one end. Okay, so those are the renderings. And then as far as next steps, similar to the long-range transportation plan, we have six goals here. Each one of them has a number of strategies, and each one of those, some of those strategies, well, they all have write-ups, and then some of them have some actions associated with them as well. We do kind of see this as a à la carte approach, you know, not necessarily saying we need to do every last thing on here, but using this as a resource. And as I said earlier, for both you and us and transit agencies and main DOT, kind of, we see this as a kind of a visioning document. And I realize a lot of this presentation, kind of pointing out the obvious, but I think the takeaway is that, you know, this is the direction that we'd like to head in, in this area and in other areas in the region. I use the limited resources that we have to really, to the extent that we can modernize and transform some of our key places in the region. So I didn't want to leave you with a big to-do list. So that's just the, going back to that image, that, thank you for your time, and we look forward to partnering with you on future transportation projects.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison. Any questions for Rick or for Jessa? Counselor Berman?
Not so much a question, just a comment. I really appreciate the hard work, useful advice, and pedestrian and bicycle-friendly suggestions in particular. And I see Patrick is someone in the back. Maybe this is something the BPAC could take a closer look at and kind of go through this report and come back to council with some prioritized suggestions. Might be at least one way to move forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. To dovetail on that, the costs associated with these projects are, I'm sure, fairly substantial. I'm assuming that you're actively pursuing funding sources from wherever source we can. Do you have a team of folks who are looking at that?
Yeah, so I think to the extent that we can find other sources of funding for any of the projects, we, we try to do that. So I think the, the Saco multimodal, Island Multimodal Bridge, which is a good example, you know, it's a big project. And that's funding that, I don't know, if it's like 10 or 12 million, let's just say, that's funding that we could use towards other projects in the region if we're able to get that funding through other sources. So federal earmarks, through bipartisan infrastructure law. So yeah, that's certainly, the trick is, it takes a lot of staff resources to be able to, to pull that off. So we do have to be a little bit choosy about what we go after. But yeah, we've been scouring the new, the new bills and trying to figure out what makes the most sense in our area to like really get the most funding we can.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with the technology.
That brings us to item B. Southern Maine Finance Authority is not here, so we will not be taking up that issue tonight. So we will see them at a different evening throughout the budget presentations. With that brings us to item C, Ferry Road Sidewalk Update, and we'll hear from Director Fox.
Good evening. I just plugged in the same electronic device that was giving them a hard time, so we'll see how this goes. Just waiting for it to do its thing. Let me connect to the screen there. But while it is, it's been about a year since we were given the direction and secured a consultant and pursued the council directive of designing a sidewalk from Bayview Road down to Seaside Ave on Ferry Road. So I wanted to bring this to you. It's good timing, layout, sort of what the design process provided. to you. It's good timing, layout, sort of what the design process provided, and also give you some costs to consider as you approach the budget process. So, you know, one thing to keep in mind, this thing's still blinking away. One thing to keep in mind is that this is not, not yet in, it's not in the proposed 24 budget.
Don't worry, Pat. We got some time, at least till nine or 10 o'clock when cars start to get on the road. So you got some time.
The large snow blower is not out front yet, so we don't have to move any cars. This always works at the back table, and then you get up here and it doesn't. So let's try this button. Hey, look at that. All right, now that we've got Counselor Archer to leave, I can get started. All right. There we go. So over the last year, the items we've, the items we've completed on the project include capturing all the existing conditions along Ferry Road, performing wetland delineations, coordinating with utility companies, that being the overhead utilities that you see attached to the poles, as well as Main Water Company for underground utilities. There's no natural gas down in that area, so that was one less thing to coordinate. Prepared design specifications, drawings, and we're finalizing the construction documents so that it's a biddable project to put out to contractors. Next steps would be establishing the financing method to bring this project to fruition, and the commitment. And most likely at this dollar value, you're talking a bond. So when I say financing method being potentially a bond, commitment being support of the community, or if it gets put in, in phases in the capital plan. Preparing and submitting environmental permit applications. We're holding off on that step because until we secure and know the financing, most environmental permits are only good for about a two-year window. And preparing easement or right-of-way acquisition figures. That would be a property by property. We were able to keep all of the infrastructure within the right-of-way with very few exceptions. However, to pick up some of the natural water flow from private properties or to better grade out the yard and how it blends to the new sidewalk, we would need either temporary or permanent grading easements and some flow of water across private property. So you can see, that's just a little snippet of one plan, but pretty much every property down through that corridor, it is a fully built-out area. So almost every property has some level of, you know, driveway, driveway approaches that will have to be redone and regraded, protection or removal of trees, relocation of utility poles. The utility companies do have to move their poles. They just, we can't tell them to do it next week. They work in the timeframe that they can, and they work in a reasonable amount of time. But there are probably 15 utility poles that would need to be moved. Unfortunately, they're just right in the area we need to be. They, we can't go in front of them. We can't quite go behind them and stay in the right-of-way. They're just right in the worst area. So about 15 of those would have to be relocated. A good portion of those are older poles that needed to be replaced anyway. So that was a fortunate, you know, scheduling thing. So. Some stuff that came out of the design process, the sidewalk was determined to be far more achievable on the north side of Ferry Road than the south side. We did not want to, each section accommodated it a little bit better on one side or the other, but we didn't want to have several mid-block crosswalks as you go down Ferry Road. So for safety purposes, we kept it all on one side of the road. I'll show you two, you're gonna see two little slides of what we tried to do. In an ideal world, we build a sidewalk with a five-foot grass esplanade and a curb. That gives a little extra separation between the pedestrians and the traffic, and gives snow storage, you know, a place for snow storage without being right on top of the sidewalk. However, what we ended up with almost the entire way down Ferry Road, because of a lot of the challenges, was more of our obstruction avoidance sidewalk layout, I'll call it, where we had to put the curb and sidewalk directly next to the travel lanes. It works. We have it a lot of places. We have it on Bradley Street. We have it on Garfield Street, a lot of, a lot of places around town. And that was just mostly because of, again, drainage and utility conflicts. And some private homes are just so close that if we put the sidewalk back, they wouldn't have had room to store a car in their driveway. So tough, tough area down through there. Utility coordination, part of the drainage system required to get this sidewalk in means that the water main has to be relocated. The water main is old, so we've worked with Main Water over the last several months to see if we could align, if they would be willing to go in and do water line relocation. So between the overhead utility line locations that would be required, as well as the water line, that would stretch out, Main Water would need at least a year of construction in addition to what we would be doing. So you could be looking at two or three years of construction impact during the, you know, April to October construction So here's just a picture to the right. I won't read through every benefit. These were in the original, you know, schematics and some of the public meetings we did with what we were, what our target was. So that would have been similar to what we were trying to put in. And again, it's just such a built-out area already that it was very hard to accommodate that. So what we ended up with was a little bit more of this approach. We had the curb and sidewalk with the, you can see the utility poles sort of tight to the back of the sidewalk. A lot of the back of the sidewalk in many, many properties would need catch basins to pick up the flow that naturally just sort of goes across people's front lawns into these shallow ditches that exist down there today. This, the sidewalk, I mean, the drainage is such a huge component of this project. You'll see, well, I'll get to the drainage in a second. The, the area west of this project, so the existing Ferry Road sidewalk bike path, as it's called, you can see it just sort of meanders around large obstructions like trees. It meanders onto private property. Those property rights were secured several decades ago. It was a big community effort to get this down and in there, and it did. I think the area it occurred, some of the benefits that it had going were, it wasn't as built up at the time, and the homes were further back. So people were willing to give up some of their front lawn because their house was hundred, sometimes 200 feet off of the roadway. That's not what we have in the section that we're trying to consider for this sidewalk. What we, when we said it was probably a $2.2 million, that was just the city engineer and myself, back of the napkin estimate of what we thought the total project cost would be. The consultant that we brought onboard was pretty much in line, maybe a little bit higher than our original estimates, until they got all of the survey results and started to actually try to design the drainage pipes to sort of pipe in all these ditches. It is an incredibly flat 6,000 feet of roadway, and it is a wet area. So you can't put a sidewalk and take away these ditches or swales because you'll back up water on everyone's, everyone's private property and they'll have no place to go. So as soon as you start piping that, it's so flat that if you were starting from scratch, you would just have the road, you would design the road to go up and down so that water could flow downhill, get to catch basins, and then you'd create sort of artificial high points and low points. We can't do that because people's drive, the houses are so close together, and the driveways don't accommodate kind of redoing the roadway and creating these sort of artificial high points and low points. So this section ended up with over 60 new drainage catch basins, which that was not in our original sort of back of the napkin without seeing the survey and elevation results. So it has pushed the costs in $2023 to $3.7 million to install the typical city sidewalk that you just saw in those other, in those other pictures. 1.7 million, or 46% of that, is just simply drainage piping and these 60 catch basins, and getting the water, you know, along the area it flows naturally now, along to the same outfall locations to the Saco River. But by the time you pipe that, this does not include any of the costs for Main Water or for the utility companies, which we do not have to pay, but we have to work with them. They would have several hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars as well. The culvert replacement at the bottom is the, what most of us would just, it's not technically a bridge, but what it, it's the bridge as you get to Seaside Ave. So we know that that's deteriorating and needs some sort of replacement regardless of this project. So that $514,000 is to replace that, but you kind of have to do it at the same time because that road has to be wider to accommodate pedestrian, pedestrian activity. And drainage system improvements, there would be some. There's no question the area could use enhancements to the drainage system. However, if we don't add a sidewalk, we would never pipe the whole, there would be no reason to pipe the whole drainage system. We might go down and replace some culverts. We might try to make some swales deeper in areas. But there wouldn't be anything to that degree. $441,000 of roadway restoration, that was just basically to, you know, resurface the road after we get done sort of digging up for cross culverts and pipes and, and work our way down with a, with a sidewalk. And then the million dollars was basic, for the sidewalk is basically the gravels, the filling, the earth moving associated with building the actual additional gravel and paved section of, of the sidewalk. So it's a big number. Certainly, I think, as you know, my goal is always to bring you some alternatives that are potentially more cost-effective, could be done in a sooner timeframe from a funding standpoint, still accomplish the majority of the goal, maybe not perfect for, maybe not perfect for any one use or perfect for everybody, but something that could be done sooner and meet a lot of people's needs or desires. So we did, this was not in the scope of our consultant, but just really over the last couple weeks, city engineer and myself have bounced a lot of numbers around and tried to tweak every line item of the budget to find out is there, what else could we do? I really hoped that if you considered a road profile a little bit more like Seaside Ave, so just wider paved shoulders, someplace for someone who's walking the dog or something, to get out of a travel lane and have something that's maybe not quite a perfect bike path, not quite a perfect sidewalk, but just literally a little bit more room. I really hoped I could show you a much lower number so that you would at least have something to consider below $3.7 million. Unfortunately, when you go through that exercise, because it's so flat, because you're still widening and moving the swales, you're still constricted by right-of-way, and you still have to bring all that water someplace, we really didn't get rid of. I mean, we were able to save, again, these were really rough numbers because this didn't rely on surveying every single point, but I would say, you know, something like a Seaside Ave approach where you don't curb and you just widen pavement to try to give a little more space would maybe be down in the $3 million range. But then you have escalators for each year out that you go. So really, I can answer as many questions. This was pretty high-level of what the design produced. I didn't want to get into property by property impacts. I think the most pressing thing right now is just, this is what it's going to cost. I mean, we now have a full survey and design. There's not a lot of places, there's no, we went through the exercise of what else could you do that's cheaper. It's just a very difficult section to add something with how long it's been built out and what's there today. So moving forward, I think considerations would either be a $3.7 million bond project. We would probably put it out in phases over a two- or three-year construction timeframe. Replace the existing culvert that's, that's going to be in need of repair. That's about $500,000. Tackle that at some point within either the capital plan or seek other grant funding. Or explore something with just wider paved shoulders that maybe accommodates bike and pedestrian a little bit, but is not certainly as safe as a curbed section with a sidewalk for pedestrians. So a few things on the table. I don't see this as a project that we can settle in a meeting or two, but I think, you know, just some general information for you as you enter budget season, knowing what the deadlines are for different, you know, whether you want to ask a July bond question, if that's a route you want to take, if you want to ask a November bond question. There's obviously three-year, four-month lead time up to those. As we go further, we can certainly have more public meetings about the actual property frontage, but I think these are the bigger topics ahead of you as the council more than neighborhood meetings and which tree is going or not going. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Fox. That was really informative and detailed, and I really appreciate the work. Some of my questions are really just about that, that funding piece. I know we've heard from a lot of neighbors that this is a critical safety project for them, but $3.7 million in three years of construction is a lot. This is also State Route 9. Is there state funding available? I also know we have a transit-oriented TIF that now goes down to Camp Ellis. Are there TIF funds available? Is there federal infrastructure funds or, or other state infrastructure funding available? If we move away from the immediate bond question, and I know we just had a sewer bond, we have a school bond coming up, are there other funding mechanisms we can look at over the year, two, three-year timeframe that might help get this project done?
Yep. I can run through, I probably should have just had another slide ready because I figured we would go there. But, I mean, I think you just saw a presentation from PACS where 3.3 million was what they funded region-wide. You saw how many municipal, you saw how many communities were in that PACS map. 3.3 million, $28 million in requests. Those are going to be, and those projects are based on sometimes decades in the making of plans, studies, anything that has a regional impact and crosses municipal boundaries and serves a regional, you know, if you look at the Turnpike exit that's going in off 112, that is very much a regional project that would, that's the type of project that's been identified for a decade plus, a lot of, referenced in a lot of studies, and it did finally come to fruition. I mean, now granted, most of that is being paid for by main turnpike authority, so that funding mechanism's not at play here. But I think that shows the amount of time some of these projects have to sit on the books or designed. The ones that this has going for it is, yes, it's a state route, so that does at least open the door. It's not on a local road. So it does open the door, but the most we can get, so take the Jenkins Road signal project that we have underway right now, we were able to get $600,000. And that was the max, the, the most we could get from state for a municipally administered project. So we absorb all of the project administration costs, project engineering, you know, all of our time overseeing it. That's about a 1.2 million. We can get a 50% match for 600,000. Annually through PACS, we have state funds that total just 400,000 for the sub-region of Bitterford, Scarborough, Old Orchard, and Saco. So Saco, I mean, Scarborough doing a complete pain road reconstruction for the same types of issues probably, they might get 100,000 out of the 400 or 200,000 in a given year, and then wait two or three more years while Saco and Bitterford sort of take turns doing projects. But they'll be matching it with a million plus to get an improvement like that done. So I don't, these new infrastructure bills, obviously I don't know the ins and outs of them. A lot of, a lot of those are still going to flow through the GP COGS and PACS. I'm heavily involved in PACS right now. I mean, I serve on all the committees I can serve on there. I'm the vice chair of the policy committee. I'm at the table representing Saco and keeping an eye out. Not all of some of these longer-range or newer, larger funding mechanisms are completely figured out. But I will tell you, this is jumping to a little bit of my opinion sitting at the table, this is not the most competitive project we can put forward because it's not along an arterial, it's not Route 1 with 20,000 cars. It's not serving a regional benefit. I mean, yes, I know the region will visit the beach, but it's just not, it does not have the same regional impact for 3-point-something million that some of the other projects that we'd be competing with do.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, thank you for the work your department's done on this to date. It's not an insignificant number. I expected it to be high based off conversations we had had at traffic safety on this particular topic, but it's about a million more than I was anticipating. It's certainly, in my opinion, outside of the scope that the city council can fund out of budget. So again, if we're talking about, you know, how to fund or funding options, I'm certainly leaning towards, you know, a bonding option. Last time we spoke about this, I think myself and Counselor Archer had, had spoke about potentially having other projects that we could bond as a package. potentially having other projects that we could bond as a package. Have you made any headway at all with that? You know, so we have other shovel ready, ready projects so we could anticipate doing, you know, 15, 20 million bond versus just this 3.7?
Yes, but I think we're about a year away. So one thing you will see, I believe, it's at least been discussed, but I'm not going to say what is or isn't in the city administrator's proposed budget, but there has been talk of finally doing it. We, we have never done that citywide infrastructure, traffic and pedestrian connectivity and mobility analysis to set, so Public Works and Planning are kind of taking the lead on this. If it goes through the budget process and is funded, we would be looking at over the next year establishing all of those sort of hotspots and the projects that need funding, but also it's to establish a fee system that's fair and equitable and really shows if you are developing in this area of Saco, you are going to contribute to this identified improvement. So, and what it allows us to do if we can complete that study, it's significant to, you know, to carry out and show all of your needs, but it, it means that if there's improvements in our neighboring communities, we actually have a chance to potentially have fees collected even from neighboring projects on large, I mean, you're talking large, large projects, but as long as those needs are identified, like if we identify that Route 1 needs capacity, has capacity issues or connectivity to comply with TOD, you know, downtown planning needs to happen in these three places. I think a year from now, we'll have a much better list to do that with versus this one was just sort of citizen request. Certainly, we can all identify and wish we could put a sidewalk there tomorrow, but it's one of probably five or six Jenkins Road, Flag Pond Road. I mean, any, any road that the traffic is going over 30 miles an hour and someone wants to walk their dog, they want a sidewalk. And I don't, I don't blame them and I can't say they don't deserve one. I just know that we can't build them all at the same time. So I think a year from now, we'll have a much more robust list if we go through that exercise.
Yeah, I'm happy to hear that. I'm supportive of that approach. Like I have been in the path of a comprehensive look at all of Saco. Last thing I think any seven of us who want to do is pit one neighborhood versus the other, and that's what has been occurring for at least the last 15 to 20 years. You know, as you indicated, I could probably ramble off at least five areas of my own ward and probably another 10 in other councillors' wards that I hear from constituents that, I mean, I was just thinking about recently, Stockman Avenue is another neighborhood, high density, I've heard for at least 20 years, and it's cited in several comp plans that it's worthy of a sidewalk. We haven't funded that. So I think taking that approach that Director Fox and city administrators is suggesting is probably the most prudent steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I would, I would agree with those sentiments, Pat, and a good job here. As I'm listening to you, I want to make sure I understood, you're talking about 3.7 in today's dollars and you're talking about a two to three year project. Is there a, a standard metric for, and I know the cost of construction and materials has been really out of control here the last several years. My only concern would be, you know, because of that three year window, that whatever money we have upfront may not be enough to get us through the end. So is there an inflationary factor or some sort of factor that's commonly used when you take today's dollars, extrapolate them out?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're certainly in a one or two year period where those escalations and factors are changing far more rapidly than most of the tables we've always used to just, to look at that. One thing these numbers did have was a 5%, 5% contingency. That's not unusual when you do a design for, for just, someone knows, there could be ledge somewhere where they go to put a pipe in, it could, it could be different things. So right now that just has a 5%. We would, obviously before it got to the point of asking a bond question, that's why I made sure to say 20, $23 somewhere in here, because we have made that mistake in the past and I assure you, we won't, we won't do it again. We will at least with whatever data is available to us. I mean, no, no table from three years ago would have predicted the construction costs we're looking at today, but we would, before you put it to bond for 3.7, we would bring you a number that anticipated whatever year we were going to bid it in, whether that's a 2% or 3% increase per year, something like that, so.
Any other questions? Councilor Gunn, then Councilor Archer, Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat, when you were, when, on the screen when you had that five foot lip, forgive me for not knowing the correct terminology, I'm sorry, esplanade, thank you.
Oh, yeah. It'd be that one right there, yeah.
Thank you. Appro, because you said that, you know, going down the ways, the way every, the road is constructed as is, obviously that's not possible for the entire length of it. Approximately, like just ballpark, just based on what you saw, how much percentage wise of the road is that possible to do that on as opposed to where you, where, like you said, it would be right on the lip?
Yeah. I mean, we started with a goal of having like 75% look like that.
Yeah.
I would say it flip flopped more to 75% looking like that because it was, every time we wanted to transition back to having the gap, which also accommodates mailboxes and all that stuff, it, we were just back into encroaching on a lot of very large trees in front yards. The next driveway didn't have enough room from the house, so we had to move it back. Different drainage considerations, so we, we kept flip flopping back and forth and preserving every property we could, and it just got to the point where it, it was getting a little bit, you would have been sort of walking up across people's driveways five feet back and then the next driveway you were back down along the roadway. So we unfortunately went from sort of a goal of 75% that to I would say probably 70% or so, looking more like just right on, right on roadway.
Is there some sort of a uniformity requirement where the breakdown lane or bike lane, however you want to term it, has to pretty much be uniform in terms of it's width the entire length?
Bike lanes used to be sort of six feet before you, to call it a bike lane. Now they go as low as, they go as low as four feet and still let you stencil out a, you know, a bike, a bike symbol.
The reason I ask is cost notwithstanding though, which I know no, no person, the public wants to hear a public official say that, but cost notwithstanding, especially considering that bike traffic down there. I know if you're driving down there and you go around a turn, all of a sudden you see two bikes going side by side, they're halfway onto the road though, you really have to keep yourself, you know, eye on the ball though, because I mean, there is, it's as much danger to the bicyclist than there, as there are to the pedestrians. Would it be a practical idea in your opinion, if the areas where you could widen the breakdown slash bike lane, you could do that instead of adding in the esplanade just to give those areas where it encourages people to sort of go, if people want to go side by side on their bikes, they can do that as opposed to going out in the road though, because like I said, a lot of twists and turns down there and, you know, sidewalk's great, everyone's going to be up on the sidewalk, but you're still bump, you know, people are coming, going around the corners and they're still running into people that are, you know, decided we're going to go to a breast because we have the same legal right as cars, even though it's quite dangerous and I don't know what they're thinking though, but I'm, you know, not a bicyclist down there, so.
Yeah, I mean, the hardest part with that would be if you still kept it curbed, like the raised curb, then you'd be bringing, your catch basins that catch the water have to sit on the edge of that curb line. So in the case of, so reducing costs, we didn't have a drainage line out in the middle of the road and catch basins going to it. We actually just put the main drainage line right under, so the catch basins are right on top of it. So if you move the curb line, you're then sort of taking the straight drain main line and you're jogging it around. So it'd add a little bit of pipe and some more structures, unfortunately. If you went with more of, I mean, this is more of a, the seaside Ave approach is a more bike friendly approach. It's just without a curb, you're not doing as much for pedestrians in a distracted driving scenario where a curb might catch a distracted driver. So one is definitely more bike friendly and the other one's more pedestrian friendly.
I do know that, my reference that some folks that wrote us emails about this topic though, off the top of their head though, had the idea of, I'm not sure if it was in those sections where the road has a quick jerk to the left or right though, but practically for speaking, that would make sense then to, that's where you install some form of a speed table, kind of like you have in, like on Capistrac Street in Portland though, where it's, it's elongated and it's something that's, because I know you've talked in the past about winter equipment having trouble with that though, but surely there must be a way to sort of elongate those things though, so it encourage, it requires people to slow down without actually threatening the health and well-being of the underside of their car, but at the same time, they know if they're going to keep bombing around those corners though, they're going to, you know, break a muffler though. I mean, surely that's, aside from increased police involvement down there in terms of just sitting on Route 9 waiting to like pick up people that are, you know, want to bomb down there, enough driven down there, and some people, they want to go home, they just, they don't care the speed limit and they just go though. I mean, short of having, spending our entire police budget to have people down there, surely some of those type of speed bumps would be prudent to have, make everyone happy and also try to, you know, maximize the safety, we're going to get out of this, because like I said, if it's just going to be the sidewalk, however you configure it though, we're still kind of missing half the, half the, half the equation, at least from my, my perspective.
Unfortunately, every, every corridor that we have could use some device that would slow cars down. Though, I mean, the problem, problem is, and I'll just say it here because we say it in every venue from traffic safety, go to any police convention, go to any highway design convention, the half the equation that's the problem is the mental mindset of drivers in today's age. The speeds, the anger with which people drive are just increasing exponentially. So to think that you're safer because we paint a crosswalk or a white edge line or something, that's relying on drivers paying attention, lifting their head up from their phone, not, you know, driving calmly and realizing it only takes an extra minute or two if you drive down Ferry Road at the speed limit. And unfortunately, that's the piece of the equation that I think we really need to tackle. We would have speed bumps on half of Saco's roadways or more if we actually, because they're speeding on Bradley Street, they're speeding in school zones. All of those could have speed bumps, but is that, that's not the solution, I don't think, that, because we can't put them everywhere that we're having these types of conflicts. This is just one that's highlighted right now, but if you look at all of our high crash locations, the near misses, the school zones, I, I don't think speed bumps are the answer, but we just somehow as a society need to tackle the driving behavior of our public. And how do you make a road, you, you can only make a road look so pedestrian friendly. At some point, drivers need to drive in a safer manner.
Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to, I still have that same vision of the holistic approach where we just take out a larger bond and, and really nail sidewalks as a way, because I do believe we're in this developmental, development precipice in which we have to decide, do we grow or do we constrain? Because we're there, and if we want to grow, then we have to go for the infrastructure. So larger cost, yes, but I think we should take the holistic approach of the city and how sidewalks can be. The other part was the point where I wanted to just talk a little bit and give you my perspective, or you had mentioned there are ways to like, I don't want to say cut costs in a negative sense, but you're like, hey, we can do it this way and this way. I think if we take this approach and we move forward, it, we've got to just do it correctly to get it done the way it's supposed to look like for the next hundred years. I grew up on the Ferry Road and I used to bike from Woody's Nursery all the way to the beach and I was safely able to get there. Now, I wasn't being safe because I was flying as fast as I could and I saw that tree right where that sledding hill is on Ferry Road and I remember that tree, I'd always have to juke, but you got to do, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right and, because this will be the sidewalk that will exist for hundreds of years, just like the Ferry Road sidewalk that I used as a kid, kids are still using it today. So what is best? I don't know that answer, but it should be, I mean, we shouldn't try to cut costs when we can, do it right the first time in this, in this approach, but again, let's look at it from the whole city's perspective, because I believe two weeks ago, there was a person hit right in the Hillview area a couple of weeks ago. And again, it, it applies throughout the whole city, the safety issue, and there's more cars and the reason why the turnpikes building an exit is because they recognize there's more cars. That by itself, when they're saying we're willing to chip in 50 million, 40 million?
Forty-two.
Forty-two million. That's not just because they feel like spending 42 million, it's they're recognizing a, a, not just a now need, but a future need, and I think we need to either, we're at that growth or constraint, ask that precipice of what we need to do and we got to fund it. Unfortunately, it'll cost us, but this is the time, I guess, or not. Thank you.
Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the robust discussion that we're having and again, the work that you've done. You know, I think it's really timely that we had this conversation at the same time as that GP COG presentation about transit oriented growth and, you know, well, they focused on, on Saco Island and downtown Biddeford. I think Councilor Archer is correct in that we need to be taking a really citywide approach to this. If we're going to continue to grow, we need to think about how to grow in smart and transit friendly ways. You know, I also really agree with your comments. My, my daughter has her driver's permit right now, so I've been sitting in the passenger seat of somebody who's been driving a number of hours, she can count on one or two hands. She's a really good driver if she's listening, but, but I'm thinking about how aggressive people drive and how fast they drive. And the gentleman's point earlier that actually this road is tricky in that it transitions from a sidewalk supported road into a non sidewalk supported road and what that does to these distracted and angry drivers, and one of the solutions I think is to get people out of cars. And, right, we simply have less traffic if less people are driving, and I think we really need a citywide approach to how we're going to do that and how we're going to build pedestrian, mass transit and bicycle friendly infrastructure. I, I support Council Johnson and Council Hatch in saying we need a citywide approach and absolutely we do. And we also need to start, and we just need to start doing it. This project is already designed, and so I hope it's not a matter of if, but I hope it's a matter of when we do it. And, and I think we should really, starting with this budget cycle, start to think about how we're going to build up the funds and infrastructure and investments that allow us to start tackling the sidewalk projects that you listed. Right? I understand that we need to prioritize them, and we need to prioritize them in a fair and transparent way that citizens can approach, and we also just need to start. Ah, so, so that's what I'd really like to see coming out of this conversation is, is a way to take Council Archer's advice and just start investing in our infrastructure during this growth. I'd like to, you know, listen to Council Johnson and Council Hatch and come up with a systematic way, and I'd really like to just start building sidewalks, including this one, which we've already invested a year of effort in, $200,000 into the design. So that's my hope going forward.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. And I'm in support of the previous conversation, but I, I don't want to play devil's advocate here, but, and this is a conversation probably for another day, I think at some point, we're going to need to consider the, the bonding capacity of our city and to what extent, you know, our taxpayers are going to be willing to push that envelope. I don't know what the answer is. All I know is we, we have a very substantial wastewater treatment plant bond that was already approved. We, we, we need school, the school bond, so that's going to be, I have no idea what that number's going to be, but it's going to be hefty. And, and so I think as we, we look at, you know, collectively pulling all these projects together, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I, I do think at some point, we're going to need to have some counsel from our finance director and our city administrator about where we're heading here from, from a total bonding and a bonding capacity, so.
City Administrator Kenrath.
Yeah, thank you. On Councilor Hatch's point, this is timely because I was actually just talking with our budget director this afternoon about doing sort of a, a presentation, update in conjunction with the budget presentation of where we sort of are in relation to our bonds and also looking at the next few years. You know, and part of my charter mandated duty is to advise you on the financial condition of the city. And Councilor Hatch is right, we have a $50 million wastewater bond, the largest in the city's history. The school number heard of late is something like 40 million. There's, we're talking about this and numbers are being tossed around, 15 to 20 million for sidewalks now. These are very, very significant amounts of debt the city's taking on. And so Glennis and I will have more to say on this in a couple of weeks, but we do have an obligation to advise you on the financial condition of the city, and we will be doing that, and I just wanted to follow up with Council, Council Hatch's statement that, that will be coming. Thank you.
Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, City Administrator. Thank you for reminding me. A year ago or two, we had a, we were compared two, we had a, we were compared our debt to other cities. If we could get that back, so I could visualize it again, I remember us, we were very low, and then was Sanford like 130 million? I don't, it was a while since we saw it. But it'd be great to see that again, so that we could compare, not again, to compare ourselves to others, but just to see where we are with our future bonds that are possibly coming, and then just to see where we stand.
Yeah, that's usually part of the auto presentation, but we can get that information. But we'll be going from, we were pretty low, to not so low anymore.
Yes, over 100, near 100.
Director Fox, thank you very much. Doesn't look like there's any more questions at this time.
All right. Thanks for your time.
And that brings us to item D, page 43 in your packet, and that is a market analysis and implementation plan update from Economic Development Director Dischardens.
Let's try to be back by 8:45.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs? Let's try to be back by 8:45. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, stretch our legs?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Dischardens. I'm the Director of Economic Development. And apparently, back in 2021, council had adopted the market analysis study that Kimmern Associates produced. And you haven't had really an opportunity kind of go over that. Prior to my arrival here, the previous Economic Development Director did put something together as a five-year internal matrix working plan, basically putting it into effect for starting FY '23. I did give you all a copy of that. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because you can read it. And you've already been here long enough, and if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer questions for you. So basically, what we did for staff is it's broken down to different categories. And then you have like the who and the when and the resources. So we have the first category is business attraction and recruitment. You're going to find as you kind of go through this, that I didn't really set timelines on it because they're ongoing. These are things that the Economic Development Department are doing on a daily basis now. So until I kind of get more into it, I've been here four months now, so to kind of give an idea what we're looking at timelines. But these are things that we are doing. And again, it's breaking down, reaching out to businesses, doing ribbon cuttings, also connecting with other staff, with main and companies and organizations I work very closely with, commercial brokers, seeing what they have going on, meetings. I've had a lot of meetings with different local developers on projects that they are seeking. I get emails constantly about people looking for the Saco region and what's available. And then healthcare was another item that was listed under there. And again, when it comes time to looking at the mixed-use areas and working with downtown, again, some of the resources is reaching out through the University of New England. They have a lot of different programs, and this also helps within the workforce development aspect of things for training. Expanding and maintaining the updated real estate listings. This one can get very tricky to do, but again, is working closely with that of the local commercial brokers, Department of Economic Development up at the state level, Southern Maine Finance Authority, Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. Again, the development incentives, we are marketing this. We actually have gone through and revamped our small business grant program and made some tweaks and changes to that. That is now posted on the website, as well as the facade program. We're also looking to be pretty healthy within our revolving loan program with the SMFA, which I will be transferring some funds over there. So again, this is for gap funding. I've worked many years with doing revolving loan programs, and they've been very successful. So again, this is the opportunity for people needing help and needing assistance. We're not the banker, we're not looking to take it away from the bank, but what we are doing is we have that gap funding that we can offer if they need a little extra to help them through. And so that program's going to look pretty solid. The impact fee system, well, I've heard a lot about impact fees since I've been here in Saco. And in speaking with the different departments, one of the things I really want to do is kind of streamline this, so that when we are working with developers, that they have a great understanding of what the impact fees are and how we can help them through that process. Again, we do have the funds, the grant program, as well as the revolving loan program that can kind of help with that and offset some of those costs as well. But again, it's getting the information out there to folks. So we are working diligently on putting something together. And business retention and expansion, again, it's working with the workforce development organizations, the Bitterford Saco Chamber, the University of New England. The Chamber has their own little group that I've been going to those meetings for workforce development. That's been very successful. Counsel Archer is on that. And, you know, so it's really good having those people sit at the table and come up with ideas and brainstorm. There are programs out there where employers don't realize that there are free services to them. And again, if they need to train under the economic development, there are funds aside to help pay for some of that cost if we need to help pay for some of that training. So again, very good programs. Getting into the arts, and again, working with Saco Main Street, Saco Main Street has a new director. I meet on a monthly basis, kind of like a coffee, that I do with the president of Saco Main Street, as well as the executive director for the Bitterford Saco Chamber. So we've been doing this, getting together. We've met a couple of times, and it's been very helpful. It's how the three units can kind of help one another and to make sure that we are getting the information out there and how we can assist. Mixed-use development, again, this is working with the TIPS, the CEAs, the CDBGs, which is the Community Development Block Grants, facade programs, all of these programs that are available is great. The city now does have a grant committee that's in-house, and I am part of that. And what we are doing is that we meet and we look at grants that can help all the different departments, what their needs are, the different departments, and how we can help leverage funding for projects. And the riverfront revitalization, again, is going to be looking at maximizing within the bridge and the riverwalk, working closely with Bitterford to implement the riverfront projects, Parks and Rec, the Public Works Department, and again, resources, kind of working with the city, as well as the Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System PACs, which you just heard from. Looking at activating riverfront with events and programming, working with Saco Main Street, the Arts Commission, Heart of Bitterford. It's real important, one of the things that Saco has is that it has a river that goes in, and then you have the ocean. There are many, many opportunities to promote and do some festivities and some events, and even including down to Camp Alice. I had the pleasure, I did go down and walk around Camp Alice last Friday and took some photos, and come back and told Brian, this is what I want to do. So it's just a great, a lot of assets. Again, if you have any questions regarding what I put before you, these, they're ongoing things, ongoing projects. This is kind of looking at the comprehensive plan, be working with planning board, you know, within the long-range planning, looking, again, with Saco Main Street, the Chamber, and just how we can kind of coordinate and make all of this happen. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Economic Development Director Dischardens? Counsel Archer?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Nice presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We had a joint council meeting with the city of Bitterford a few weeks ago, and there seemed to be a common theme and consensus around making greater efforts of connecting both communities on events that were mutually beneficial. And it sounds like you're trying to weave that into the mix, but I think the more we can do that, the better, even if it's starting with a better coordination of events that Saco Main Street and Heart of Bitterford, and it helps us showcase both of our communities. One example, which is an event that I not only participate in as a counselor, but as a Rotary Club, as well as the Christmas Parade of Lights, and why that parade can't keep going instead of ending at Pepperell Square, going down the hill and into Bitterford. Okay?
Yep.
So that's just a very simple
It is.
...example. But those are the things, it sounds like you're moving in that direction. I just want to encourage you to continue to do that.
When I was in Auburn, one of the things that both of the cities, again, twin cities, they each had their own parade, a Parade of Lights. They didn't have Parade of Lights until I came down and I said, let's do Parade of Lights. And then it came to where the two cities came together. And what we did is we alternated. So we had, we would start off in one city and come to the other city, and that's where Santa would be. The following year, we would switch over. So it just gave both of those cities the opportunity for something like that, and it worked out very well.
It's how we run our Veterans Day parades and Memorial Day parades. They swap.
They swap off. Makes perfect sense. And I do know with ANG, you know, the conversations we had, and we're going to do more of our monthly coffee meetings, and we are going to invite the folks over in Bitterford to come and be part of that. Greg Mitchell and I have a long history with each other, so, and he's their Economic Development Director there, so.
No further questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That completes new business this evening. That brings us to item 11, the administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While Tracy's still here, I just want to point out that we had a very successful after-hours event with the Chamber here in this room a couple of weeks ago. It was well-attended and went off very well, so thank you, Tracy, for organizing that.
Thank you.
And it was the first time, I believe, we hosted here at City Hall.
Well, we can do it again.
So, thank you. Starting off, an update on the affordable housing task force. We will be getting going this month with our regular meetings. The full roster of names is as follows: myself, Glennis Solis, Emily Cole Prescott, Tracy Dischardens, Stacey Thompson, Sean McCarthy, and Jane Maynard. Try to get a diversity of departments and viewpoints there, and people who work on this issue from slightly different angles to get some good conversation going. So looking forward to getting going with that, and we'll keep you obviously updated as we move along. Upcoming agenda is March 20th, we will have our joint meeting with the school board, and Jeremy will be presenting the school department budget at that meeting, food truck and sidewalk policy, Chapter 83 update, the public hearing, an employee handbook update, 265 North Street Contract Zone Public Hearing. On the 27th, we'll be presenting the city administrators' FY '24 budget. Chapter 83 will be at final reading, 265 North Street will be at final reading. Some quick staff updates. Our communications department has recently put together two new videos that you can view on the city's YouTube page. The first is a compilation of our Employee Milestones Recognition Program that we've been putting out over the last couple of years. Did a nice job on that. And we also have a new recruiting video with some highlights of the daily work performed by our staff that was largely done by Alex in our communications department. So thank you to them for two new, pretty great videos. I would like to welcome Alan Byers as our new patrol officer at Saco PD, and with sure a long and successful career here with the city of Saco. And lastly, as many municipalities around the state are, we are hiring for a number of positions, and so I thought I would give that a plug here. We are currently looking for a city arborist, a grounds worker, We are currently looking for a city arborist, a grounds worker. Life guards are in desperate need again this year. Crossing guards, emergency communication specialists, police patrol officers, and a mechanic, a lead mechanic over at Public Works. So word of mouth is still a very useful tool in recruiting, so please spread the word if you know anyone who may be interested in any of those opportunities. And of course, we are here, our HR department is here to answer any questions you may have on those positions. Lastly, just a final reminder on a bid solicitation. This is for the Hillview Ave-Jenkins Road Intersection Realignment and Signalization. Those bids are due on March 15th at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Administrator Keanrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to item 12, Council Discussion and Comment. Any Council Discussion and Comment this evening? Councilor Berman, and then Councilor Johnston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally enjoyed our workshop recently. I thought that format worked well. I've also received positive feedback from constituents about the transparency it provided and watching us have those discussions. There were two pieces that stemmed from that discussion that I would like to highlight. One, I still have interest in our short-term rental, our Airbnb policy and regulations. I would like to see that come back up for greater discussion at some point. And two, I received feedback about the city administrator's Affordable Housing Task Force, and whether that might not be better served as a council-level committee where members of the public and elected officials could also participate. I personally don't have a strong opinion on that. My interest is in seeing affordable housing come to pass, whatever it takes, but I thought I would raise that for discussion at this point about whether we were interested in expanding that type of committee. And finally, regarding the workshop format, I want to make a suggestion that perhaps some of the updates, like the one from PACs, or maybe perhaps the Economic Development Plan, might be better suited for that workshop format, when we would have more time to dig into it, and they would come earlier in the meeting, when we might be fresher and better able to engage with the content.
Thank you. Any further Council Discussion and Comment? Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sounds like Councilor Berman and I are on the same wavelength along with the city administrator. You know, we're several months into the new year, and I have several topics I'd like to address. So, you know, I was patient with LD 2003. I think it's an important topic that needed to go first, and I'm happy to hear that the city administrator will be bringing something forward with the sidewalk ordinance. I'm not 100% sure what that is, but it's something we need to address. We're out of COVID now, and while I certainly was willing to make some accommodations during those years, there are other elements of our sidewalks that need to be taken into consideration before we just allow the entirety of them to be preoccupied or occupied. Additionally, I'm happy to hear that food trucks conversation will be coming forward. This is an ordinance I've been advocating for, going back to, I think Rick Mischut as city administrator. Again, it was not something that necessarily needed to be a pressing topic during those years, but I think it'd be beneficial to attack that. The short-term rentals is another item that is definitely on the forefront for me. And lastly, one that I think is highly pertinent, given the conversations we just had earlier tonight, school impact fees. As we move forward with a school bond, and we talk about how we're going to fund it, school impact fees should be front and center. And I would ask that city staff go about implementing or bring something forward to city council to go about implementing those. There are state guidelines for how you apply them. I just think, you know, given that conversation we just had, and knowing that we're looking at somewhere between $20 to $40 million hour cost, not state-funded, but hour cost municipality for a school bond, it's pretty imperative that we start passing, or at least a portion of the new anticipated cost on new development. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Keanrath?
Yeah, just to again provide some insight on the Affordable Housing Task Force. So my purview is city staff. I can form working groups and internal committees to try to get work done. I cannot appoint members of the public. I cannot appoint elected officials. That's definitely outside my purview. So my objective here is I'm interested in getting something done. I'm interested in getting some forward momentum on this issue. I think a lot of city staff are on the same page with this. I'll also say that part of my job is to get staff working together and collaborating. And this is another opportunity for a number of departments that don't usually work together on a lot of things, to get together and to work in a collaborative way that breaks down silos and brings our departments closer together. So that's the other aspect of this, and why I'm interested in some of these staff-level committees. It's good for our staff. It's good for their working relationships. But most importantly, it's to bring forward recommendations to this body that can then be discussed and acted upon, or not. They're just ideas to be vetted and recommendations to come forward. But, so, you know, my lane is to, is to deal with city staff, is to appoint city staff to committees and working groups. And we are interested in trying to get something done and make some progress on this issue. This is probably the number-one issue of our time facing this community, this region, the state, and really the country. And so I think the time is now to get something done. We're interested in moving in that direction. And so that's where this, this came forward. There was no intention, obviously, to leave anyone out or to leave any voices unheard. This is going to be a thorough and comprehensive study of what we can do soon and now, to put forward recommendations to this body to try to get something done here. So just a little background on where this came from, and I think we're really looking forward to getting going. Thank you.
Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an appointed member of the Housing Committee, I have no contention with staff operating in this capacity and this committee level. It's advisory by nature, and I have no contentions with that while still having an appointed body for the Housing Committee.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston, and then Councilor Hatch. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Councilor Archer. I don't have any issues at all with city staff addressing or bringing forward ideas to, whether it's the committee or city council. For one, it removes any politics from it entirely. It's just a staff level. Here's some suggestions. So I'm supportive of that. And again, that Housing Committee could be wrong. It's been a while since I read the language, but I'm pretty certain that it's kind of overlaps with the staff level as far as implementation. And I'm also fairly certain that it actually is supposed to have three city counselors on that appointed body as a Housing Committee. So I think we're one short, and I'd be happy to be that third.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm going to throw my public support to a staff-level task force and support the City Administrator Keanrath's approach. I think that we all, there's nobody on this day that's going to argue that affordable housing isn't an issue. It is. It's a big issue. It's actually expanded in scope over the years. Personally, I'm just tired of talking about it at a 30,000-foot level, because that's all we do is talk about it. And I'm encouraged by the fact that we might actually have staff with boots on the ground, if you will, that are going to actually bring proposals to us that are meaningful action plans. So I am a very strong supporter of a staff-level engagement here, not to discount the other committees that could participate, but I really think this can be a meaningful opportunity for our staff, as City Administrator Keanrath has suggested, working together, building, you know, a consolidated approach to a major problem. And what will be even more exciting is, as my expectation will be, that they're very likely to come up with action plans that will help us chip away at this problem. So I am in full support of staff-level engagement.
Thank you. With that, moving on to item 13, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Councilor Archer?
Nay.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1. To adjourn at 9:08 p.m. Have a great evening, everyone.